Okay, Craig Camerata is with us today. Our new director of facilities. He started beginning this month.[9.11][9.11][applause] Okay? I hope you can see him through the crowd. All right?[14.65][14.65][laughter]
I just have something quick to say. Over the past two weeks, I've been a busy man in terms of refreshing myself, in terms of my own professional development and learning. Last week, I was in Washington DC for the annual National School Public Relations Association Conference, which was a change for me in terms of the types of conferences that I've been to. This particular conference had to do with communicating with our publics. How we communicate a message, how we talk about critical issues that are facing educators on a daily basis. I found it to be very refreshing and rewarding, and I shared some of that information with the board last week. Over the last several days, I had the -- I was going to say misfortune, but I guess I was lucky. I had the fortune of spending the past two days with Dr. Casaminto in Cambridge at Harvard for a two-day summer institute for leaders through the New York State Council of School Superintendents. It's a two-day seminar that takes place every year in Cambridge for superintendents, assistant superintendents, deputy superintendents, and it's really a good opportunity for us to refresh and recharge and to discuss critical issues related to education. One of the topics had to do with redesigning educational institutions to create social mobility and change for students. A second session that we attended had to do with how school districts deploy programs and whether or not we do a good job in terms of deploying those programs to ensure that they really meet our needs. One of the things that stuck with me that the presenter talked about was school districts tend to put programs in place as a solution in search of a problem. And it stuck with me because in doing that, sometimes we're spinning our wheels without really addressing the needs of students and positive outcomes for students. So that's definitely one of those areas that we'll continue to take a critical eye to, to ensure that we are, one, using our community resources in an efficient way, and number two, that we're doing things that will benefit student achievement always. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Karp. We're next going to move into the discussion and some action items on the agenda. The first is in regards to the school-wide safety plan. Oh, no, I'm coming back. You're right. I'm sorry. First is the public commentary section for anyone in the public who would like to discuss an item on the agenda. So we will move --
I have to ask. I can't see who's there.
There's two people. They're happily here, filling our seats.[211.01][211.01][laughter] So next is the hearing, the district-wide safety plan.
Very good. There you go. Yeah. As required by Commissioner's Regulations 155.17, we are required to conduct a public hearing as it relates to the district-wide safety plan. The district-wide safety plan is developed by a committee of stakeholders in the district. We met on June 21st, I mean, June 12th, and we reviewed the plan. We made changes to the plan, and the plan was submitted to the board for the board's review. And tonight is an opportunity for board members or our community to ask any questions related to the plan. The process after this would be a 30-day comment period wherein the community can ask questions about the plan. And at our August meeting, I think August 21st, the board will then take action on the district-wide safety plan as well as the individual school building safety plans. The individual school district or school building safety plans are not available to the public because they're confidential, because they have sensitive information included in those plans. So at this time, I'd open the floor for any questions from the board or from the public regarding the district-wide safety plan.
I think it was very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Yes. The version that we have has notes on it.
Those will be taken up.
I know, but those are being addressed?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Then, yeah, I mean, otherwise, no.
Agreed.
Those were notes that I embedded in?
Yes.
We saw them.
We saw them.
Exactly. So I just wanted to make sure those -- I knew those weren't going to appear on the official, but still wanted to make sure that they were.
Very good. Dr. Luce, did you have a question?
No, I just said I thought it was very comprehensive.
Very good. And just as a point of information, over the past year, the district was actually audited by New York State as it relates to our safety plans. There were a couple of things that we needed to address, which we have since put in place since the 2018-2019 school year. Processes included the development of a district-wide safety team, as well as this process that we're currently going through right now, conducting a hearing, posting the safety plan for input from the community, and the board taking action prior to September 1st, 2019. In addition to that, we've also had conversations with our building principals to ensure that new teachers, as well as staff, are provided with training within the first 15 days of the school year, as required by law. That will be completed. In addition to that, ensuring that all new staff within 30 days of their arrival onboard are also provided with training as it relates to emergency response measures at the building level.
Excellent.
No further action?
Yeah, no action tonight, but unless there's any further comment on this, I think we're good to move on to the next item, correct?
Very good.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the East Meadow Kewanis Field of Honor. Do you want me to give the -- I was going to say, do you want to give a background of this?
I have a hard time fully understanding what it was. I guess that I understand both of it.
Right. It's a fundraiser for the Kewanis, as well as the programs that they service, wherein for Veterans Day, our high schools would be offered the opportunity to have parents purchase flags that would fly around the school perimeter during the week of Veterans Day. Parents would basically purchase these flags, and the flags would then be posted on the perimeter of the schools in celebration and in honor of veterans. The money, I think, that the Kewanis collect would be used for some of their fundraising events, such as their Thanksgiving celebration for the elderly and veterans, as well as the scholarships that they provide to students in our school district and their summer camp program, Kewanis.
Excellent. Thank you. So a couple of quick questions that I have. So are students the ones putting out the flags, or who's putting them out? And is it a community service hours opportunity for them?
Yes, it would be the students with the students who participate in, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's K Club.
Okay.
Yep. Remember, K Club is a part of Kewanis.
Of Kewanis. And then, so if funds are being collected that go to Kewanis, my only issue with that is, are we now opening ourselves up for any organization that wants to use our properties for their purposes? Even if, even I get that they're a non-for-profit, they're a community-driven organization, now has basically free access to say, "Well, you let Kewanis do it. How come we can't do our thing on your property?"
I would probably say not, since Kewanis is already present in our schools through K Club and --
K Club, Builders Club, and K Kids.
K Kids. And not to mention, quarterly, we do Terrific Kids. So while Kewanis is a community-based organization, it's a community-based organization that's significantly linked to schools, not only in the East Meadow School District, but also in other school districts. The mere fact that we have a K Club and a K Club is an indication of that partnership and that relationship that is well-established between Kewanis and the school district. I've seen this before. I've seen it in other school districts, such as West Babylon. I've seen it in Half Hollow Hills. And to a certain extent, it was actually done at Bowling Green. Some of you may recall that outside on the lawn of Bowling Green, there were these small little flags. Those were actually done by the K Club?
K Kids.
K Kids at Bowling Green. So it's not something that is new. It's something that's going to be expanded in the sense that the flags that would be posted at East Meadow High School and Clark are not the small flags. They're actually large flags.
Dr. Karp?
Yes.
Was the previous program run in the same way that they're proposing this one?
No. It's being done on a larger scale. I think that it was done at Bowling Green, specifically by the K Kids, yes.
Okay.
Wherein this one will be service-oriented in terms of the kids who are in K Club at the secondary level.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So if we're talking about the parents would purchase, what is the cost? And is there, would there be fundraising opportunities for those who can't afford to purchase the flags outright?
I would have to get a specific price, or better yet, we could invite somebody from Kewanis to come and present on the specifics of what they're proposing.
Because my only concern is that there would be a situation where a parent unfortunately cannot afford it, and the child feels --
Left out.
Yeah. I mean, left out, but also that they're not able to contribute to a big community service project.
Good. I think it would be a good idea to bring somebody in from Kewanis, because I, shape of form, am sitting advocating or promoting nor denying this activity. I think it's the board's discretion, but I think some of the questions that are being raised right now at the table are good ones, and I think it's important that we have someone from Kewanis come in to address those questions.
Dr. Karp, I have a question. Actually, I have two. Do we know how many flags would be involved? That's the first question. And the second question that I have is a follow-up to Elisa's question, which is the sponsorship. And I want to make sure that as much of the community has an opportunity. Certainly, I think it should be students first, parents, faculty, but beyond that, does it go out to other avenues in the community?
Like I said, I can't answer those questions. I think that would require more conversations with a member of the Kewanis to answer those specifically.
I have concerns as well. Not that I don't think it's going to be a wonderful event, or that we should display our flag, but I'm very uneasy with the idea of the money going to the Kewanis club and then the event being, happening on school property. They want to do an event where they raise money. It should not be in our schools. If we want to do something like this, then great. Let us collect the money through the clubs, through the school accounts, and turn around and do whatever it is that we want to do. I don't see the need for an external organization, and I think it opens up our district to liabilities. I think that in the past, there's been a lot of co-mingling of outside organizations in the community and the school district, not always to the benefit of the school district. And I'm very weary of the fact that we'd be, as Mr. Melnick was saying before, I believe, we'd be opening ourselves up to situations where any organization can come in and try to do something with our schools. Case in point, last year, we had a situation where another community organization, purporting to be a community organization, came in and attempted to profit off of our schools. This board luckily stopped that from happening before it happened, but same group of people and the same type of, it just sounds like the same type of thing. So while this event may be a fundraiser for an organization, it certainly doesn't sound like a fundraiser for the school district, so that's my two cents.
Sorry, can I have a follow-up? Ding-ing like this, but I want to make sure that I'm on the record. So I understand that this is done in other school districts. Do we have an idea of how this gets accomplished in other school districts?
We can always investigate that, but once again, I would offer that we invite someone from the Kewanis to answer that question more specifically.
I think that the best idea would be to have, if we could present whatever questions that we have, prepare some questions, and then present it to a representative.
With the board's permission, I would go ahead and invite their treasurer, Brian Flaherty.
I know that guy.
You know him?
I know that guy.
I would invite him to our August 21st Board of Education meeting. At that time, the board can put together some questions that they may want to ask, and then we take it from there.
So maybe if we had someone from Kewanis come?
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I'm glad I thought of that.
That's a brilliant idea. I second that.
Can I say something?
Please.
I think that we need to figure out how to make it more of a learning experience for the kids and not a fundraising event for an outside organization. Okay.
Okay. If anyone has anything else on this one, or we'll move on? Okay. Excellent. Next is the first reading of Policy 1230, the Visitor and Staff Identification. And since the policy, I believe, Mr. Russo?
Thank you. So this is a first reading of Policy 1230, Staff Identification Policy, and it's a new policy. However, many of the practices and the procedures within the policy are what we already do as a district. So we decided to put a policy in place to be able to have in policy format what exactly we do as a district. The policy is fairly general in nature, and what's going to happen is, after the board adopts the policy, after the second reading, tonight's the first reading, after the second reading, then the building principals, as well as central administration, will work on the regulations, which will be much more detailed. So I would say that this policy is fairly general in terms of what we do overall, but the regulations will be much more specific as to what exactly is happening district-wide and in each of the individual buildings. Okay? And that's it? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. So I, and I know that these are general, but I think we could even generalize them more, because it sort of splits out visits that occur during events, such as, and it has it in here, parent-teacher organization meetings, public gatherings, registered, whatever it is, and then separates that from other times that people visit the schools. And it seems to say that only the other times people visit the schools will they need to provide identification and where they're, you know, and, you know, go through the system. Where can't we say, no matter, whenever someone comes to the school, they'll do this? And then when we get into the regular, into the specific regulations, say, "We're not going to do it under these circumstances, but we will under these circumstances." Because there may be a time where we say, "We want everyone who comes into this building, no matter what time of day it is and what they're here for, to register in." And this sort of excludes that during certain organizational meetings. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Doesn't have to. I'm just asking. All right. So we will, we'll take a look at it. Yeah, and I think it's just changing the, and I think it's the second paragraph, yeah, the second paragraph to just sort of denote that, yeah, while people are invited in, and there's other times that people come, under all circumstances, the district may ask to be, to register when you're entering the building. And then when we put it down for each individual building, say, if they're here for a PTA meeting, you know, we're not going to take names and IDs, but if they're coming for, you know, something like a, whatever it is that they're coming to the building for, to pick up their kid who's in the nurse's office, then yes, they will be registering.
Seems like a small thing, but there's nothing about Board of Education members on here, and while we do follow the same procedures as any other visitor, we do sometimes go to the buildings to different events, as in our capacity as school board members. So I would just request that maybe we think about some language in there about school board members acting in their duties as school board members.
I don't know. I, go ahead. You -- I think we need to be careful in terms of becoming too granular in terms of developing a policy. Our district has adopted a practice wherein board members have ID badges, right? And so I think your ID badge says it all, that, yes, I belong here. So I don't think we want to distinguish between what types of staff members need clearance, because we've already presented that as long as you have a building badge, you belong.
Right, but we're --
We're not staffed. That's the only reason I just said that.
But you have a badge.
Okay.
And the mere fact that you have a badge, and that's one of the discussions that we had as we were rolling out ID cards, because initially, the discussion was, who gets an ID badge, right? And we had to actually sit down and go through specific types of groups to determine who would get an ID badge. For example, at one point, members of the PTA wanted ID badges, but we kind of had to draw the line there, right? Because the PTA, while they do incredible work for our district, they're not employees, nor are they elected officials, as you guys are. And so that's where we drew the line. In addition to that, we have to be careful with first responders, such as the police. In terms of when they enter a building, do we ask them for their IDs? If you're a policeman, you're not giving a school district your ID, because your home address is on there. If you're a police officer, you don't want a school district capturing your personal identifiable information. So there was a learning curve for us, and that's one of the reasons why we got to this point, where we had to look for a policy. Luckily, school boards had one. And now we're going to work through the process of, okay, here's the policy very general, and here's the regulation very specific in detail, where we'll work out those pieces of who gets in and who doesn't. One of the things that we should all remember is that we're now in a perpetual lockout. That's important, right? We're in a perpetual lockout from the time kids enter the building until the time kids leave the building at the end of the school day. The question then becomes, what happens at the end of the school day until? How do we process people in and out? Are we in perpetual lockout? Well, that's an issue, because we have a lot of outside agencies using our buildings, right? And so one of the discussions that Dr. Pizzo and I have been having, and I sent out to you guys a couple of weeks ago, is a fee schedule. While not this board, but previous boards have been reluctant to charge people, well, guess what? We're in that place where we're going to have to start charging, because there are additional requirements in the evening, having security guards. And if people are using our facilities, they should also be picking up some of that freight. So that's a conversation that we're going to have to have as we develop the regulations for this particular policy. So I would suggest, recommend at this time, that we try to keep the policy broad, and then we narrowly focus as we develop the regulations, and I'll turn to council to see if he's in agreement with that.
Can you repeat the rest of the question? I'm sorry. You kind of started going on --
Policy broad, regulations very detailed.
I agree, because, I mean, the regulations change, and the policies have to go through the board readings, and by making the regulations specific enough, you can take care of every situation, not have your board policy manual be 800 pages.
Okay.
Yep. It's goodbye me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now, so unless there's any other comment on this one, we're not voting on this tonight, because this was just the first reading. Are there any other comments on this one? No? Okay, good. We're going to move to the consent agenda. The first one is curriculum and instruction. Would someone please make a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction agenda items 1 through 8? Dr. Eckers, second.
Pause, 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 pause.
No, we're pausing.
I'm sorry. I should have shared this with you. We'll have to take these one by one.
Oh, okay.
And there's a, huh?
I have to change. I have to change.
Oh, to, right.
Said consent.
And just let me give a quick little briefing. When we get to items number four through eight, four through eight represent a shift in terms of our practice in this district. It is my belief that one of the board's charge is to approve all programs that are implemented in the district. I'm going to give Dr. Casaminto an opportunity to just share briefly on what he has done to develop a collaborative process in terms of how courses and textbooks are actually embedded in the district, and what that process entails, and how we got to the point at which we're proposing these five new courses. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. -- oh, you could do items one and two, and then three, we'll turn it over to Dr. D.
Do we get to wait on Dr. Casaminto? So I should take as long as I possibly can for items one and two.
I'm going over.
Would someone like, please, make a motion to approve items one and two on the curriculum and instruction consent agenda? Still Dr. Eckers?
Okay.
Good. Second, Ms. Baruch. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Do you want to make a motion to make the next one, or do you, or we want to let --
Motion, discussion.
Okay. So someone like to make a motion to approve the K through 12 comprehensive school counseling plan? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Luce, discussion? Okay.
Can I discuss it? Re-quit them.
Please, Dr. Casaminto.
So this school counseling plan, these, this is in regard to the new guidance regulations, 100.2J. So what you have in front of you is a compilation of the work that I did last year with the guidance counselors. When you look through this document and you look at the goals, the mission, the vision, that all was created by our counselors, and our counselors were amazing in developing this plan. This plan follows the American School Counselors Association. You'll hear it called the ASCA model. This plan is a one-year plan. It is, it is, I don't think it's the be-all, end-all of all plans. This will be a work in progress. You will receive this plan yearly. Part of the regulations are that a guidance advisory board must be set up, and they must meet a minimum of two times per year, and they must report to the board once per year. So that's what this document that you just approved was. You can see that it went through and talked about the time that our counselors spend on each of the different types of services. Obviously, we want direct services, because that's counselors actually speaking to children, and that's a big piece. The second piece of these regulations are the fact that students in grades K to 5 need to have access to a school counselor, and that's something that we are continuing to work on and will be working on throughout this year. So that's really all I wanted to say about this at this time. So if you have any questions, you can, you can always let me know.
Thank you, Dr. Casaminto. Anyone have any questions, discussion items in regards to the plan? All in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you. Someone like to, and we're going to take each course individually. Someone like to make a motion to approve the new Advanced Placement Art History course? Dr. Eckers, second. Dr. Luce, discussion?
Yes. So this course is a new AP course, but all of these courses, by the way, are for the 2021 school year, not the one that we're coming up on.
Okay.
It's the next one, because we have to develop the course offering book soon, so we have to do these approvals before we print the course offering book. So this is a brand-new AP course. It's AP art history. It is an elective that was recommended by the art department. Dr. Karp asked me to go through how we do this, how we do program and textbook approvals moving forward. So what happens is that the department or department chair people come forward with a proposal. That proposal is then presented to the PTA Curriculum Council, and then, most importantly, the Instructional Advisory Committee. The Instructional Advisory Committee is composed of teachers, administrators, and I sit on that committee. It is chaired by, this time, Mr. Mendonis and Mr. Malone, Maloney, from East Meadow High School, Ryan Maloney. And we actually, they hear from the department, a department chair, they hash out any questions they have, and as you can see at the bottom of the form, they can approve it, they can not approve it, or they can ask for more information from them. At the last meeting, only one thing was actually sent back requesting more information. The rest we have in front of us right now for approval of the board. During this IAC meeting, Mr. Mendonis, as the Director of Social Studies, did bring up the fact that a social studies teacher perhaps at some point could be teaching this course as well. At the time, that is, that's acceptable by the committee. However, because it was proposed by the art department, and they have a teacher who's willing and able to do this in both buildings, that's why it will be in the art department.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Casaminto. Are there any further, my mic wasn't on. Any further discussion questions on this? All in favor?
Scott.
Six, nothing. Excellent.
Scott and Julie.
Huh?
Scott and Julie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, would someone like to make a motion to approve
Sorry.
Next, would someone like to make a motion to approve the new AP Research Course? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Eckers, discussion?
So last year, you saw the Institution of AP Seminar. Mr. Lukasik and Mr. Volz and team actually presented that here. So this is the second of the two-part AP Capstone Program. The way that we're structuring this is similar to the way some other districts have done it as well. Students in our current, that are currently in science research will have the option to have AP Research part of their program. In addition, we will be running a social science component of research that will meet the needs of this program as well. So this is part two of the AP Capstone.
Just a quick question. Who, who will the students' advisors be on these projects?
So if they're in science research, it would be the science research teacher in each of the buildings, and at this time, we don't have social science research, but that would be probably, most likely, in the social studies department, could be in the English department.
Okay. So based on the area, it would be determined?
Correct.
Okay.
Also, that can change from year to year. Like, in my own school where I work, it rotates between different departments based on the availability of the staff and the needs of the kids.
Right. This would require no additional staffing.
Any other questions?
Thank you, that was my question.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? All in favor? Six, nothing. Excellent. Would someone please make a motion to approve the Architectural Design and Drawing Program? Ms. Tell, second. Ms. Baruch, discussion?
So this is the third course in our Architectural Design and Drawing. If you've been to the District Art Show, you can see some of the architecture work that our students have done over at East Meadow High School. So this is, this would be the Capstone to that program, and in addition, this Capstone program would then, the students would be eligible for Farmingdale State College credits as well. This will only run if there is enrollment, high enough enrollment for it.
What's that minimum number, or that's to be determined?
It's to be determined. There are board guidelines on minimum requirements, but as a new course, we could...
Yeah.
Maybe go lower.
Okay. And this falls under which sort of...
Art.
Under art?
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions, concerns, comments? All in favor? Six, nothing. Would someone please like to make a motion to approve the new course of Digital Design and Animation?
I want to take that one.
Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Tell?
Yes, also animation is spoken incorrectly, but we'll let the animators take care of that.
Dr. Casamento, any comments?
Is it on your end? It's not on my end? ANI. All right. So this is a course Dr. Hal and I had been talking about since I got here, is that we had, you know, all these great art offerings, but we didn't do anything for animation. You know, there's those, there's those kids out there who were playing video games, who are working with animation, and this is an area of great interest for many students. So I said, and I say that, but we'll see how many kids would actually sign up for this course, and again, it would be enrollment-dependent. So this, this is that course that meets that animation need in the art department, and as you can see, it brings in digital photography and the animation together. And you're right, I think this, I have no art abilities, but this looks really cool to me, so this is a brand-new elective.
By way of cost of, what I'm guessing is going to be software?
Yeah, so some of the stuff is, I see, if you look at some of the stuff like iMovie, some of the stuff just, we already have.
Right.
So the cost to operate this course would be minimal.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Six, nothing. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the new course of Spanish for the Heritage Speaker? Dr. Eckers, second. Ms. Baruch. Dr. Casamento, any comments?
So this course actually fills a different kind of need. This comes out of the World Language Department, and so as our demographics are shifting, we're starting to get more students who actually do have Spanish spoken in their home. And so the question would beg, why does a student who has some knowledge of the Spanish language, do they have to sit through course, a Spanish I course, right, an entry-level Spanish course? And so what Ms. Morgani did, along with a teacher over at Woodland, they actually, and Clark, they actually looked at what would a student who has this, what would their program look like? And if you go to page 2 of that, you can actually see what the progression of courses would look like. It does, it does move the checkpoint up to 7th grade from 8th grade, and it moves the checkpoint B from 10th grade down to 9th grade. So this does fill that need, and as you can see, the courses would be primarily taught in the native language. So that's what this course does. It also, one of the things that you'll be presented with this year is what's known as the seal of biliteracy, and that's another pathway to graduation for our students, and these students would be eligible for the seal of biliteracy.
The most important thing that this does, in my opinion, and I'd like to thank the school district for proposing this course, is that it gives kids who come from a home where Spanish is spoken at home, the opportunity to become more literate in their home language. So one of the things that we see as educators is that students who come to us through the English as a New Language Program, is that a lot of times, these kids are actually not really fully literate in their home languages, and they come to us and they're being, they're expected to become literate in English, and building those literacy skills in the first language are vital to both of the languages. So thank you for the district's idea here.
Any other comments in regards to this one? All in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you, Dr. Casamento. The next is Personnel, and we're going to do this one by one.
No consent. You notice, item 19, items 1 through 17.
Yes. Yes.
The superintendent of schools would like to recommend free item and everything.
Consent. No, no, consent agenda.
Yes, consent.
No, Jen's confused. I confused you? That was my fault.
Change him. Change him to consent.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve Personnel Agenda Items 1 through 17? Ms. Napolitano, second. Ms. Tell? I see Dr. Luce, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you. That one went much faster without Dr. Casamento coming in on each one. Next is the Consent Agenda for the Business Section. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Business Agenda Items 1 through 6? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Napolitano, any discussion? All in favor? Six, nothing. Excellent. Now comes the Custodial Overtime Report. If someone would like to make a motion to approve the Custodial Overtime Report for May of 2019? Dr. Eckers, second. Ms. Napolitano, any discussion? I can tell you, and my look at it is significantly down from yours past. Significantly? Significantly. So thank you for all those involved in that. Any other discussion? All in favor? Six, nothing. Next is the Second Public Commentary Section for items that are not necessarily on the agenda for any open items for anyone in our audience who would like to comment in regards... Okay?
No pressure.
Next is the Approval of Salary Changes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve salary changes?
I have it here. There's no autograph, and, yeah, we didn't have the blue sheet.
Yeah, I don't think we need the blue sheet. Dr. Luce, first on that motion. Second, Ms. Tell, any discussion? Other than there's no blue sheet, all in favor? Six, nothing. Next is Comments by Board Members. So I turn it over to my fellow members. Are there any comments that you would like to make towards the end of the meeting here? Okay. So we are going to go into executive session, we're going to make a motion to go into executive session. We are not expecting to come out and make a vote after executive session tonight, so while you're free to stick around, please don't feel obligated to do so. Would someone like to make a motion to go to executive session for, hold on, I wrote it. For the purposes of conducting interviews for the Director of Guidance to discuss a lawsuit filed against the district and to hear advice from council? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Tell, all in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.